Let's bring to order the March 23 business meeting of the city council, starting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Jerry DiTulio, Kristi Davis, Bud Starker.
Present.
Zach Urban.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy. And Mr. Fitzgerald is excused for tonight, and I have not heard from Mrs. Wooden, so I don't know where she is, but we do have a quorum.
Ms. Wooden won't be here tonight. She has reported that she's gone. Okay, I've been asked to have an approval of the minutes, so the minutes of March 9th, as well as the study notes of March 2nd, are there any changes to the minutes? I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
And can we cast our votes, or does anybody need to abstain?
Poll the council.
Poll the council. Oh, you want to push the button.
Motion carries five zero with Mr. Starker abstaining because he was absent.
Okay, let's move on to proclamations and ceremonies, and we have a couple of them tonight. I'm going to move to the podium. Hello. Our first presentation tonight is, I'm very, very proud to announce that we have an award for our city manager. Matter of fact, Jane Brottenbaum, would you please come on up? Our city manager has received, and it says on the plaque what she's received, the Colorado City and County Management Association 2014 Manager of the Year. Patrick, do you want to come on up here? We're very proud of you, Patrick, and presenting will be the Boulder city manager, Jane Brottenbaum, also, who is also Mountain Plains Regional Vice President of International City and County Management Association.
Thank you, Mayor, so much. I'm also on the board of the Colorado City and County Managers Association, and this award comes from the Colorado City and County Managers Association, again, for the manager of the year for 2014. So we received a number of nominations across the state for many managers who might have qualified for manager of the year, but I can assure you that Patrick Goff rose above all of them, and you should be so proud, I know you are, of the work that he did in 2014. So, of course, you know what all he did, but I'm not sure that everyone in the audience does, so I'm going to talk just a little bit about the work that Patrick did this year. He, of course, showed great leadership skills, but in a city like Wheat Ridge and all around the Denver area, we care a lot about economic development and economic vitality, and your city has really rose to the top this year, risen to the top this year. Through Patrick's good work with developers and the city council, we've had three new residential communities start this year, a huge focus on commercial development at Kipling and 38th Street at the Kipling Ridge Development, and finally having a Sprouts Farmers Market come to Wheat Ridge will be just really excellent. He's done a lot of work in community outreach, and I really want to call out the fact that he's been working with the schools to form a community committee and local school initiative to really promote the schools in Wheat Ridge, which of course relates highly to economic development in the community. People want to locate where there are great schools. He's done work at community outreach along 38 Main Street, lots of activities going on in that area. And one thing that sometimes city council members or the public don't really recognize, they know about the economic development work that someone does, but Patrick's leadership has helped the Wheat Ridge Police Department receive national reaccreditation, which is very difficult to do. You've received the GFPA Distinguished Budget Award for 2014, and the Parks and Recreation Department is working on accreditation for 2016. Let me tell you from a city manager that has tried in two other communities to get that done, it's not easy, and good for Wheat Ridge for making that happen. Patrick is also a great leader in the city organization, believing, of course, in the core values of your organization: accountability, change, teamwork, integrity, opportunity, now. That's such a great slogan and value system, I really appreciate it. He cares about employee recognition, staff development, and the wellness program. He's been an integral part in the changing image of the city of Wheat Ridge, and all of those things make me think he's the best city manager I ever heard of, especially for 2014. So let me, with great pride and honor, give to Patrick the award of the Colorado City and County Manager of the Year. Congratulations. Okay, great. Thank you so much. So also, I don't know if you have a copy of the nomination letter, but if you don't, I hope that the city's management team, which provided it, will provide it to you. It's really impressive. So thanks very much for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you so much, Jane, for coming out. Boulder city council meetings are not on Monday nights, are you off? But, you know, Jane's a wonderful leader in our state also. She, as the mayor mentioned, is the regional vice president for the International City and County Management Association and represents Colorado very well. So I think this is the first time we've had somebody from Colorado represent ICMA, so it's amazing. She's running a city and running around the country with that organization too. So thank you very much, I'm very honored and humbled to work for the city and be a resident of our community. It's a great place to live and work. I wouldn't have gotten this award without leadership and traction of our city council and future, or former mayors and council members also, and of course, our staff. You have to surround yourself with excellent staff members to get this type of work done, so I'd like to thank them also. So thank you very much.
That's kind of a tough act to follow. All right, we have now a check presentation to the Institute for Environmental Solutions. This association, or this group, is, they do a program that is designed to teach Wheat Ridge High School students to care for the environment while providing critical improvements to the Green Belt. There's a lot more to the story, but I'm going to introduce the three of those that I think are present here. Carol Lyons, Executive Director, hi Carol, please come forward. Jean Mangus.
Sean.
Sean, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't write that right. Sean Mangus, Sean. And John Kelly. Thanks for coming. And I didn't introduce, Carol is the Executive Director of the Institute for Environmental Solutions. Sean is the Tree Project Manager, and John is, John Kelly is the Growing the Green Belt Program Coordinator. I'd also like to ask council member Jerry DiTulio to come forward. Jerry has been quite a promoter on this program. He's a Wheat Ridge High School Special Ed teacher, and he played an important role in rounding up donations, and he is asked to present these checks to IES.
Thanks, Joyce, and I also wanted to make sure we had Margaret Pageet up from the Parks and Rec Department. So I have a few checks here tonight, and so for the third year in a row, the Wheat Ridge Parks Department, the Institute for Environmental Solutions, or IES, and my Wheat Ridge High School Career Exploration Class, which is about 30 students, will be working in the Green Belt on April 17th, planting trees, building wildlife protection devices for the trees, learning about various parks and forestry careers. The job well done will be end with a lunch sponsored by Pietrus Pizzeria. Tonight I'm presenting additional monies from our elected officials and city staff to IES, which will support the purchase of larger and more trees to be planted in the Wheat Ridge Green Belt. Donations from elected officials to our public outreach funds include council member Starker, Wooden, Pond, and me. Staff donations include our city attorney and our city manager, and also a check from Joyce J. So I'd like to present Carol with the check from Joyce J. for $100. And then we have a check from our city attorney, see, I'm giving it to him, so you can't see I took it, for $100. And then this is the public outreach check from our council for $1,100. Thank you very much.
Sure. The Institute for Environmental Solutions, which is a Denver-based, very small nonprofit organization, is honored to work with the city of Wheat Ridge. As Jerry mentioned, this is our third year planting trees, working with Jerry DiTulio, Margaret Pageet, and a lot of community volunteers. I'm sure you all agree that the Green Belt is a priceless jewel in this community, and it's a challenge to keep up such a large area without a lot of resources. And so we've been working with Margaret in particular, along with many volunteers, to figure out ways to plant new trees, restore the Green Belt, replace trees that have been damaged by all sorts of things, in particular, the storms in 2009, and to have them survive. And so we're quite pleased because now we have almost a three full-year track record of the trees that we were planting, and Tracy was there the first year, and they are surviving at a rate of close to 90 percent, which is a lot higher than the survival rate in the past. And we can, we've expanded to include the students, Jerry's class, last year we had classes from Color Strand Elementary and Mountain Phoenix also out there planting. And so the kids are learning about their environment, they're taking a role in the environment, and really learning to make a difference while improving the Green Belt. As Jerry mentioned, the planting day this year is Friday, April 17th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. That's also Arbor Day in Colorado. We'd be very pleased if any or all of you would like to come and join us even for a ceremonial tree planting, and these funds will make a huge difference. They, among other things, will go to match a $2,000 grant from the Colorado Tree Coalition in collaboration with Colorado State Forest Service, which is also funding this work. And we expect the Assistant State Forester to be there on the 17th to help us get started. So thank you very, very much.
I did forget to mention too that part of the $1,100 was from our city manager, his public outreach, so thank you again.
We now move to citizens' right to speak, and this is citizens who may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, and hopefully they've signed the public comment roster. And we do have a couple. Oh, right, I'm number one, thank you. Vivian Voss.
Good evening, Vivian Voss, V as in Victor, O as in Sam, 6920 West 47th Place. I am here tonight to extend an invitation to anybody that hears me. Two groups are doing a joint community meeting, that would be Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge and Keep Wheat Ridge Local, March 25th at The Grange, just east of the Wheat Ridge 58 School, 6:30 p.m. That's this coming Wednesday. Thank you all who can attend.
Thank you. And Kim Calamino.
Good evening, Kim Calamino, 4070 Dover Street. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for the opportunity. I'm here to thank and share my appreciation for the members of the Wheaties Academy, a program of Wheat Ridge 2020, for their engagement in community meetings and conversation. As you know, and as many council members, or perhaps all of you, have supported, the Wheat Ridge, Wheaties Academy is an engagement and leadership program of Wheat Ridge 2020. I look forward to their future programs and input in the community, and their community efforts that we will see at the outcome of the academy. I also want to congratulate Patrick Goff on his recent award, and thank him for his recent article in Connections on the Importance of Civil Discourse. As Chair of the Wheat Ridge 2020 Partners in Progress Committee, this is an issue that I am greatly concerned with. I hope that whatever the topic, as a community, we can engage civilly, with honesty and commitment to the city's future, no matter how we disagree on all topics that we face as a community. Lastly, I invite council and all members of the community to attend the last in the Wheat Ridge 2020 series, Food and Film, this Wednesday night at 6:00 p.m. at the Active Adult Center. The movie is Food Patriots. It's a documentary on how our food systems and small changes can make a difference in our food sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's not? Okay, let's move on to item number one on our agenda. Oh, first, we have to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? It was mentioned to me that there was going to be, there was a possibility of a change, since we had two council members not present, those council members wish to take part in the discussion of our citizen survey, and would prefer that we would move the agenda, or this item, excuse me, to April 6th. Is there anyone who can?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the public survey to the April 6th study session.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, please poll the council.
Oh, motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Now let's move on to public hearing and ordinances on second reading, starting with item number one. And Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill Number 07-2015, an ordinance providing for the sunset of the Animal Welfare and Control Commission. This ordinance sunsets the Animal Welfare and Control Commission. The commission is no longer needed to perform functions which are otherwise the charge of city departments.
Okay, I'm going, I need an ordinance number on that.
This is going to be ordinance number 1569.
1569, thank you. I'm going to open a public hearing. Is there any staff report on this particular item?
Just briefly, Your Honor members of the council, the Animal Welfare Control Commission is, of course, served for, with distinction, for a very long time. We believe that we found, I'm pretty sure we have found all the various references in the Code of Laws to the Animal Welfare Control Commission. You'll notice that in most cases, it's deferring to the Chief of Police or code enforcement, which is really who's taking care of those issues now. There was one change to Section 26605 on large animals, where the Animal Welfare Control Commission was referred to, and so that needed to get changed, and that accordingly triggered a review by the Planning Commission. They've had their public hearing, and the minutes from the Planning Commission are in your packet under, I think, a memo from Lauren Mikhalek, the planner upstairs. So I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions of Mr. Dahl? Okay, we do have someone signed up under public testimony. I believe Nancy Snow, you're signed up? Did you want to speak? Uh, yes, there is. Heather Cameron? Okay, Heather, Heather, do you want to come forward?
My name's Heather Cameron, I'm the Executive Director at Foothills Animal Shelter, your animal shelter. The good news is I only have three minutes to speak, otherwise I'd be here for 33 minutes. I just really wanted to come this evening and give kudos and pause up to your community service officers, your animal control and protection officers here in Wheat Ridge. Foothills Animal Shelter, and our animal shelter is unique in that we serve six municipalities and one county. That's pretty unique, and all of the officers through those cities and in the county work closely with each other and in collaboration with us to protect animals, protect the community, and to save lives. When we started in 1976, we were Jefferson Animal Shelter. It was basically the dog pound. In 1994, we became Table Mountain Animal Center. As animal welfare progressed in our community, so did our organization, and in 2010, we became Foothills Animal Shelter. Through that time, animal welfare has progressed tremendously with collaboration, partnerships, training, in a web of partners throughout our community, in the county and in the region, of shelters, and rescue organizations, and veterinarians, and animal protection officers that work together to save lives and to serve our community and our community's animals. The animal control officers and Wheat Ridge's community service officers are instrumental in being our eyes and ears in the field. We operate the shelter for them, we are always open, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the animal protection officers. Their work in the field, they're our eyes and ears, and we protect the animals they bring to us. So I just wanted to give kudos to them. It's a difficult job, it's a lot of decision-making, a lot of case management. People, as you well know, love, love, love their animals, and I hope you are very proud. You have a very compassionate team here, and great problem solvers as well. Just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Heather. Ms. Snow?
Good evening, my name is Nancy Snow, and I'd like to make a comment. I didn't come in at the very beginning of the meeting. Can I beg you all to please speak up when you, I can't hear from here, and even at home, when I turn up my TV, you are very hard to hear. Anyway, I'm speaking tonight in opposition to getting rid of the animal commission. I realize it's a done deal, I sort of, I've watched the council, and I've been reading the comments, and everybody but one person, I think, was in favor. The word sunset is nice and innocuous, but basically you are dumping a commission on people who have offered to participate and now are being told they're not needed. I know I'm one of those who quote our little motto out in the lobby all the time, you know, how we have our government by participation and neglect, but we don't always appreciate people who volunteer to participate. Now let me tell you why I think the animal commission is needed. The lady before just mentioned, people do love their animals, and this city has always been very welcoming, not only of pets, but farm animals. But animals do cause neighborhood problems sometimes, and in the past, and I wanted to mention when I was on the city council, it was fairly common that if there was a neighborhood problem, the animal commission went out to see if they could help. For example, if somebody had animals, horses, and didn't clean up after them, the animal commission would go out and try to help. When the law, ordinances were changed, there were some recommendations made for the size of lots and the setbacks, but, but now, basically, that's all gone. The only thing's left now is police action. You're not going to get any neighborhood mediation, you're not going to get the animal commission out to see if they can help. You know, in the past, the police department and the attorney that served the county, not the city court, not county court, worked together with the commission, and I think it forestalled some court cases or helped solve them. So all you got now left, I guess, is to give tickets to people that are having problems or causing problems in the neighborhood. And anyway, I just think it's very, very sad that somebody offers to participate in this city and are dumped, frankly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, let's, any questions or?
The chief, I think, has a few words he'd like.
Oh, thank you. Chief Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I certainly appreciate Nancy's comments, and, you know, I listen to them with due diligence because she speaks from a, you know, historic perspective. She's been a member of this community for many, many years, and I respect what Nancy says, but I think we do more than just police action in these cases. You know, we had started, and have started, a mediation program, a neighborhood mediation program, four or five years ago. We use mediation as a way to resolve neighborhood disputes as pertains to animals. We use Jefferson County's mediation services. In fact, a couple of members of council have participated in those efforts to bring mediation in as well, and we also do a lot of education as it pertains to educating citizens, members of our community, you know, about dogs. It's not always, you know, just a police action or a police citation. I think the challenge that we have in this community is our community's changed. Certainly, our city staff has changed, and although I respect and understand why this commission was put in place, you know, when the city was formed, you know, our times have changed in terms of the professionalism of our staff, the training that we give to them, and then we have the difficulty of filling the vacant positions that we have, you know, on our commission. We have two vacant positions on our commission right now that we're not able to fill, plus a third vacancy for a vet. Actually, the code requires two veterinarians, and we're not even able to find one at this time. So we're not saying goodbye to all of the members of the Animal Welfare Commission. We certainly recognize, you know, the expertise that they have, and certainly our plan is to use their expertise in the different areas that they have to help us when problems or issues arise that, you know, will align with their knowledge and their skills and abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. It is definitely with difficulty and sadness that we do sunset the animal control, excuse me, the Animal Welfare Commission. It's a difficult change, and we will be doing a more of a formal thank you and salute, say thank you for the years of service, probably at our next business meeting. With that, I believe we do need the motion. Oh, I need to close the public meeting? Public meeting's closed, thank you, public hearing is closed. Please give us the motion.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 07-2015, an ordinance providing for the sunset of the Animal Welfare and Control Commission, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please, is there any other questions? No? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries six zero.
Can you revote? I voted no.
Motion carries five to one with Council Member DiTulio voting no.
Okay, moving on to item number two. Council Bill Number 082015.
I got it.
Mr. Pond.
Thank you. I'm happy to present Council Bill Number 08-2015, an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease purchase financing agreement for solar panels with Alpine Bank, and in connection therewith, certain related documents and transaction. At issue, this ordinance approves a lease purchasing finance agreement with Alpine Bank in the total of amount of $800,000 to finance the purchase of 40 percent of the power from Jefferson County to solar array for a total of 228.42 kilowatts. The purchase price for the solar array panel is $776,628, and the remaining The purchase price for the solar array panel is $776,628, and the remaining $23,372 is for financing origination fees.
Do we have a staff report on this?
Not on first reading.
No. Any questions of staff? Public comment? Do we have any public comment on this item? Oh, this is first reading.
Is the motion in order?
Oh, it's not, Mark. Okay, a motion is in order, please.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 08-2015, an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease purchasing finance agreement for solar panels with Alpine Bank and in connection therewith, certain related documents and transactions on first reading, ordered published, public hearings set for Monday, April 13, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and that take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Langworthy. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Okay, moving to item number four. Oh, I slipped one. I jumped one. Oh, I know what's wrong with this thing. Okay, item number three, Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to approve award of ITB-15-01 Kipling Multi-Use Trail to Technology Constructors, Inc., Arvada, Colorado, in the amount of $2,210,371, with a contingency amount of $375,000, for a total amount of $2,585,371. At issue, the city was awarded federal funding for a multi-use trail project on Kipling Street from 32nd Avenue to 44th Avenue through the Denver Regional Council of Government, Dr. Cog, Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, in March 2011. The project involves the construction of a trail to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists. On February 24, 2015, seven bids were received and verified. The apparent low bidder was Technology Constructors, Inc., Arvada, Colorado, in the amount of Three bids were disqualified due to incomplete submission of required forms. The bid submitted by Technology Constructors, Inc., met all of the bid requirements. The company's references and experience were evaluated by public works staff as a basis for recommendation. As a result, staff recommends award of the project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Technology Constructor, Inc., in the amount, in the bid amount of $2,210,371.
I see we have Mark here. Do we have a staff report?
Only if there's any questions.
Okay. You available for questions? Does council have questions? Mr. DiTulio?
I just had one quick question. So now that we were going to approve this contract, what's the status of the undergrounding along Kipling? Will that be completed?
Excel finished Thursday, quite a while back, as you may know. Comcast is currently working. I sent them an email this morning asking what the status was, and haven't heard back yet from them. CenturyLink, we've got to enter into a contract for somewhere around $80,000 to pay them to underground their portion. So as soon as we get that resolved and we hear back from Comcast, we should have that done within just a few weeks or a few months on that portion there on the 32nd to 35th.
So it's my understanding that we're not going to be able to complete this project until we have everything undergrounded, because they're going to be overlaying possibly the sidewalk and the path and everything. So can we put some fire under CenturyLink and Comcast and a few others to get them to agree to get their work done?
Yeah, again, I just don't know what the status on Comcast is. They pulled a right-of-way permit from us almost a month ago, I believe, so I think they're probably pretty close to being finished up. And we actually got contacted by CenturyLink on the northern portion to locate where the right-of-way is going to be up there for them to start setting their pedestals on that northern portion. So we're hearing back. I can certainly provide an update to council at the next meeting to let you guys know where we are and everything. I just, I emailed everybody this morning, and they didn't get back with me by this, tonight.
So we're looking at CenturyLink, Comcast, and that's the two vendors?
That's the two that are left, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a quick...
Mr. Reisberg?
Sorry. So even if it takes them a little while, this contract isn't, I mean, they should have this done before the contract starts moving forward, correct?
Yes. Yes, we've got several places we can go ahead and start working on things. They can start working on the bridge peers and getting the bridge order. There's a lot of things they can do prior to the utilities completely getting out of the way. So we're, I don't think there'll be a scheduling conflict.
Thank you.
Mr. Pond has questions?
Well, so just along the same lines, I guess, is there just a rough understanding of the schedule at this point in terms of when we would see work commencing and potential duration?
Once we get approval from council on the construction contract, it only takes us a couple of weeks to get all the paperwork done and to get a pre-construction meeting scheduled. Part of what we did in this thing, we were really nervous about bid prices, is we allowed them up to a ninety-day delay start. So they may delay their start by ninety days because we wanted to make sure we got this open to as many people as we possibly could. And everything, we've been hearing horror stories about bids coming in high. My estimate was fifteen grand below the slow bids. We felt really good about where we landed on this. So I, we haven't met with the contractor yet to figure out when they want to start, if they want to wait that ninety days, if they want to start right away. So, you know, once, again, once we know those things, we can certainly have Scott or Patrick give you guys a report as soon as we've met with the contractor and had a pre-construction meeting, we know what their schedule is.
Madam Mayor.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Urban?
It's indicated in the memo that there's a, I think, a $375,000 contingency amount. Is that based on the bid that was submitted, or what is that based off of?
That's based on the bid that was submitted, plus there's, that money covers the amount we've got to pay CenturyLink for their undergrounding that they've got to do from 32nd to 35th. There's also money in there. We've got to hire a quality control consultant, and also a, we're going to hire a construction consultant, construction manager consultant, like we did on 32nd Young Field with these federal projects. The paperwork is just overwhelming for us as staff, and so we generally hire a consultant to help us with those inspections and with that paperwork. And so that 375 covers all those things, plus just in case we run into something that we're not anticipating.
So that's about a seventeen percent contingency amount? Is that an average?
We normally do about ten percent. That other seven percent, again, is to help cover that cost for CenturyLink to do the undergrounding. By doing it this way, we get federal reimbursement on that CenturyLink cost. If we'd done it beforehand, we wouldn't get federal reimbursement on that, which is running about eighty-two percent on this contract. So we thought it was important to get that folded in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mark. I believe a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to award ITB-15-01 Kipling Multi-Use Trail Project to Technology Constructors, Inc., Arvada, Colorado, in the contract amount of $2,210,371, with a contingency amount of $375,000, for a total of $2,585,371. I further move to charge $22,104 to the capital investment fund and deposit $22,104 in the dollars in the public art fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. If there's no further questions, we can cast our votes or cast your votes.
Mr. Starker, you were the second. Thank you.
Please cast your votes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Councilmember Langworthy again on this item number four?
Thank you. A motion to accept Kipling Street right-of-way and temporary construction easements from adjacent property owners for the Kipling Street Multi-Use Trail Project. At issue, the city was awarded federal funding for a multi-use trail project on Kipling Street from 32nd Avenue to 44th Avenue through the Denver Regional Council of Government, Dr. Cog, Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, in March 2011. The project involves the construction of a trail along the east side of Kipling to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists. Construction plans have been completed and improved by the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, and the Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, and bids for the project have been received. The right-of-way acquisition is also essentially complete with the assistance of the city's consultant, Bohannon Houston. A substantial number of right-of-way parcels and temporary construction easements have been acquired through the right-of-way property acquisition process. Construction of the Kipling Trail, Kipling Street Trail requires utilization of street right-of-way and easements obtained from various property owners adjacent to the future trail. Property owners have conveyed to the city the necessary right-of-way by warranty deed and have provided temporary construction easements where needed. The majority of the acquisitions were accepted by the city at the October 13, 2014 city council meeting. Two additional parcels have been acquired, and staff is seeking acceptance of those two right-of-ways and easements. A third and final parcel acquisition is still in negotiations.
Once again, any questions of staff? Seeing none, I need a motion then?
I move to accept the Kipling Street rights-of-way and temporary construction easements from adjacent property owners for the Kipling Street Multi-Use Trail Project.
If there's no discussion, we can, you can go ahead and cast your votes. Do we have...
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't get a second? Go ahead and cast your votes if there's no discussion.
Motion carries six-zero.
Item number five, Councilmember Pons.
Thank you. Resolution Number 19-2015, a resolution approving a community solar interest purchase and energy agency agreement with Clean Energy Collective in the amount of $776,628 to participate in a solar garden project in Jefferson County. At issue, approval of a community solar interest purchase and energy agency agreement with Clean Energy Collective, CEC. CEC is a Colorado company that develops, operates, and maintains community-owned solar arrays, also referred to as solar gardens or community solar farms. This agreement stipulates the terms and conditions of the city's purchase of forty percent of the power from the Jefferson County Number Two solar array for a total of 228.42 kilowatts.
Any staff presentations on this one?
We're answering any questions. We also have Amy Thompson, who's with CEC, is here in the audience this evening, if you have any questions for her. This resolution is approval of an agreement with CEC. The other action item you took action on this evening was the actual lease agreement with the bank Alpine, and that has to be done by ordinance, so that will come back for second reading. This is just a resolution.
Okay.
Motion in order?
Please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-2015, a resolution approving a community solar interest purchase and energy agency agreement with Clean Energy Collective for, in the amount of $776,628, to participate in a solar garden project in Jefferson County.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Langworthy. No further discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Item number six, along the same subject. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number six. This is Resolution Number 17-2015, a resolution amending fiscal year 2015 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $42,436.08 for the renewal of the 2015 three-year support agreement for WRTV8 Grenacious Video Streaming Services. At issue, should the city approve a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $42,436.08 for the renewal of the 2015 three-year support agreement for WRTV8 Grenacious Video Streaming Service?
We do have staff available, if there's any questions? Mr. DiTulio?
I guess my comment is, is have we gone out to bid on this? Because I'm not really sure we're getting our money's worth with the support on this. Channel Eight has had a lot of problems in the past, blackouts. Right now, if you look at Channel Eight, it's grainy. There's been times where there's no sound, no picture. So I don't know if this is really the best direction for us at this point. I mean, I try to watch Channel Eight as much as I can to get caught up on things because that's where I get a lot of my information from, and I just don't see where, right now, we're getting the support and the quality of the product. Does anybody have any comments on that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Honestly, most of the problems we've had with Channel Eight are from the Comcast side. This is the software behind the video streaming that is provided, and we haven't had as many, I don't think, many problems with this software. It's been Comcast issues. When the system does go down, we have to call Comcast, and they have to fix it.
Is that why, is it Comcast right now that's causing the grainy picture on Channel Eight, or is that...
It probably is, if, I'll have Heather look into the grainy picture. And I haven't noticed that on my own TV, but I will check with Heather and see if we're having other issues.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Langworthy?
I just want to make a small comment because it wasn't in as part of the issue, but I think it's important to note that while the money states it's coming as a supplemental budget appropriation, the money actually comes from our PEG funds, our Public Education Government, which even after paying this one, still has $139,803.98 and expects another $40,000 in the upcoming year. So while we're paying for it, it's not coming out of general funds, it comes out of a set amount of money we get from Comcast.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I have a question of Mr. Goff. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I get calls from people about, and I direct them to Channel Eight, and I get comments that it takes forever to download. Is that from our website? Does the streaming on the website of, like, from archives or of past meetings, and this, I guess, really doesn't have anything to do with Channel Eight, so I probably shouldn't even ask it, but it's, it comes from that videotaping, and people at home try to download, try to watch a council meeting or a study session, and it takes a really long time to download off the website. Is that, whose problem is that? I mean, can that be improved?
There could be numerous issues. It could be the individuals, depends what type of service they have at their home. It could be, if it is a citywide issue, it's probably more likely on our sides. So I'll also mention this to Heather and IT and see what, see if there's any issues. But you have to have an appropriate bandwidth streaming at your own home to download videos. They do take longer. But yeah, if there's an issue citywide, we'll definitely look at that, and I'll mention that.
Seems like a couple of times I've tried to hook onto something from the archives, and it took a while to, I mean, longer than I thought was acceptable to download, so I can address that.
Okay. Mr. Urban has a question?
To the point that Councilmember DiTulio brought up with respect to the going out to bid, has there been any effort to go out to bid on this service? And when was the last time an open bid process occurred on this?
Let me see real quick. I don't think this time. This is a new three-year agreement. I think when we initially went out to bid for the last three-year agreement, that was the last time we went to bid out on this. And I believe staff has felt that the system has been working fine, so decided not to rebid. We did go to quote from them, but we can always rebid it and see what options are out there. I don't know what other options are out there on this.
And then there's an item in here with respect to a three percent increase that the caveat to it says, "Any rate increase shall be kept," doesn't indicate that there would be an increase, but it says, it indicates that there may be an increase. I'm just curious as to if we're expecting an annual increase over time on this, or if it's going to be set at a certain amount.
Well, they base it on, as it says in here, the CPI, so if there's a significant increase in the CPI, there will be an increase in this, but it is capped at three percent.
So it says...
So it's benchmarked to the CPI.
It says capped at the maximum increase of the current CPI or whichever's larger. So it wouldn't necessarily be capped at three percent. It would be, if the CPI is larger than three percent, then it would be, it's not whichever's less, it's whichever's... I'm just curious as to whether we have that in the agreement, or whether they would, there be some discussion prior to that increase occurring?
It is a stipulation of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DiTulio?
I guess I would be more amicable to go, maybe do it month-to-month with them, than we go out to bid and just see what else is out in the community and out in this industry. I have a concern that we're not going to bid on this, and we could be getting something better for less money. We don't know, and it's been three years. So I would prefer that we maybe continue this pending a bid process, and then come back and see what we have. It may be granic us in the end, but I think it would be owed to ourselves and to the community to at least go out to bid and see what else could be competitive on pricing and on service.
We don't have a motion yet, so... Would you like... Would you like to move to continue? Is that what you're suggesting?
Do you know if Granicus would go to a month-to-month while we go out to bid?
Um, I'm sure, we're on, I think this expired actually already, our, their original contract, so the first of March, so we're already kind of on a day-by-day retainer, so.
So I guess I would make a motion to continue or postpone item number seven until we go out through a bid process and then come back to City Council as soon as possible with different bid options.
Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second, if there's any discussion on this suggestion, on the motion. Mr. Stark?
So, Mr. Goff, do you believe that, are we in the possibility of, since we're out of contract with Grenacia's?
Granicus.
Granus?
Granicus.
Granicus. Is there, is there a possibility that they would sort of stop broadcasting our feed?
I don't think they'll stop broadcasting our feed. We'll, we'll talk to them and see what we can do. You know, if, if we do out to bid, it'll be a couple of months' process, so we'll definitely have to do a, a month-to-month. If, if they are going to disrupt our broadcast, we'll, we'll come back to you before we make a decision.
And are there other, are there other vendors in, in our location that, with, with whom to gather competitive proposals?
I, I believe so. I believe there's, I, I probably do apologize, I don't have enough information about this item this evening, I thought Heather was going to be here, but I'm sure there's other vendors that we can, we can scour the market for and see. There's no guarantee that there's another company, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't have enough information, but we can, we can definitely do a process and bring it back to you.
Mr. Pons?
Can I, will you restate the motion, please?
The motion is to postpone until we have taken another bids.
So specifically asking for other bids. I'm actually, that may be a little bit too specific for me, I'm not, I don't know that I'll support that, only because I'd actually like to know a little bit more from staff about continuation of service, what the competition is, and understand the context of it before, because we may not have to go out for, for bid necessarily, we may need just more information to understand what, what's going on, so if, I think it's fine to continue it, but I, I don't want to just, I don't want to just say flat out it has to go out to bid. I'd like to know more information from staff about the context of the service and some other things before we determine what the bidding environment is.
On my motion, I said continue or postpone, so I mean, I would rather continue it to come back with some options for going out to bid. And that's what I was trying to get at, was that we would go out to potential bids and see what we can get, you know, a cheaper price, and go on a month-to-month until then, that's my goal. I mean, if we can save ten thousand dollars and have a decent, have the same service, I think we should do that.
So you're saying, you're not saying specifically go out to bid, you're saying a continuance to, to look at options?
That would be fine, and I guess if that's okay with the second.
Yes.
All right. So we have, our motion is now is the continuance of, of this discussion and to look at other
Possibilities of getting bids.
Other possibilities.
Mr. Dahl, do you have to? Mr. Dahl, do you have any wording that would make, would be clarified for this, so there's no confusion? Thank you, that's my motion.
Is that our new motion?
That's what I was trying to get at, off, off the cuff.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
That's a lot of friendly amendments with our.
All right, I would seem to me that unless there's further discussion, we can just, we can vote on that continuance.
So you know, I'm only going to write this one way in the minutes. I'm going to do, not going to do three versions. Motion carries six zero.
There's only one version, it's the version that the city attorney basically gave.
We never went, we never voted. Okay, item number seven, I think we're ready to move on. Councilmember?
Thank you.
Davis?
A motion to reappoint John Kello to the Building Code Advisory Board, District Four, and reappoint Sally Banghart to the Board of Adjustments, District Four, terms to expire March second, twenty eighteen. At issue, at the March nineteenth, twenty fifteen council meeting, the reappointments of John Kello for the Building Code Advisory Board for District Four, and Sally Banghart for the Board of Adjustments for District Four, were inadvertently omitted from the list of reappointments read to council. Councilmembers Wooton and Langworthy have requested that Mr. Kello, Kello and Ms. Banghart be reappointed to their committee, terms ending March second, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Second, thank you. Please cast your votes.
So I move to reappoint John Kello to the Building Code, District Four, and Sally Banghart to the Board of Adjustments, District Four, terms ending March second, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Second for Ms. Langworthy. If there's no discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion carries six zero.
Item number eight has been postponed until, I think, our April sixth meeting. Moving on to item number nine, do we have our speaker here?
Yes, Natalie is here.
Natalie Minton?
Hello, my name, my name is Natalie Minton, I am the RTD Director for District M, which includes Lakewood, Golden, and Wheat Ridge, and so I had asked to speak before you, to share with you a fairly substantial study that we are in the middle of, which will affect fare levels and the structure for the riders here in Wheat Ridge. And I was, just to start with, we started this process about April of last year, and we went out to the public with the intent to make our fare structure easier to understand. It's fairly complex right now at this point, between all the different levels, whether it's a local bus route to regional, to how many times are you transferring, from where are you going and where are you going to? So the intent here again was to make it a little bit easier for people to understand. And so I'll go through where we're at, but to start with again, over the last several months, we've gone out to the public, and one of the first steps that we took was to say, we have right now a fairly unique type of a system where we were charging by distance in some cases. So the West Corridor light rail would be one example, it had the different zones. That was something that people found was confusing and they thought it was just unfair. Most transit systems do not use something like the zone process, that's, that's actually a very minor part of the different transit agencies that will use that. When we went out to the public over the last several months, what we asked them is, if we get rid of distance-based fares, how should we go about it? Should we charge by time? In all these different scenarios that we had. So after, the public has, has given us such comments over the months, this is what we are coming up with. So now we will start. Number one, I just wanted to include this slide to just give you kind of a little bit of background. RTD is regulated by some state statutes. One of the ones that affects us most is that we're required by state statute to at least have thirty percent fare recovery, so meaning thirty percent of our operating costs must be recovered at the fare box. RTD, like most government agencies, is not just driven or funded by user fees. Obviously, there are people who pay sales tax to RTD, don't use the system, but that's a large part of our, our funding. So the state statute again says that we have to have at least thirty percent fare recovery at the fare box. Depending on how somebody calculates the formula and what they want to throw in there, we can use a range really that it could be anywhere just below thirty percent, up to fifty percent. There's a lot of arguments there. But the point I'm bringing up is that we can't just give away our fares for free, so. Fare history, again, background, the last time that we raised fares was two thousand eleven. So here we are, three years later, and as you all know, costs go up, so it is now time for us to look at the fares. With as many lines as we have opening next year, this is the time to make our fare system easier, especially because the majority of them next year will be light rail lines and commuter rail, actually mostly commuter. As we go out to the public, one of the things that we'll hear is that they may have gone to Washington DC, or they've gone to Baltimore, or they've gone to other various cities, and they try to compare Denver to some of these other cities. The reason I included this slide for peer comparison is that Denver is pretty, is hard to compare to. Denver has a large sprawling region, it is not condensed, we don't have that population density that would be present in some other cities. So that, when, when that comment comes up, it really needs to be looked at closely whether they're bringing up an agency that's like RTD. Let me start with, first of all, how many of you regularly use RTD? Two? Okay. And how many use it maybe a few times a year? Little more, okay. All right, so I'm going to, I have this slide here, I don't have the current fares on there, but I will read them, note them. So right now, a single boarding costs two dollars, twenty-five cents for just a regular fare without any discount. A lot of people are going to end up using a transfer if they're getting on, getting on one bus, they need to transfer to another. Part of what this whole fare structure right now will do, and I think one of the things that, especially why I wanted to come before you and speak to you, this fare proposal will get rid of transfers. So that is something that will really affect those who are riders. So right now, the single boarding is two dollars, twenty-five cents. It's proposed to go up to two dollars and sixty cents. That sounds pretty dramatic, but what you need to keep in mind is that is if you're using paying by cash. The way to get around that big increase is to use the smart card that we're rolling out later this year. If you use a smart card, so a stored value card, you would see a twenty-five cent discount. So instead of going from two dollars, twenty-five cents up to two sixty, it would take you from two twenty-five to two thirty-five. That is fairly reasonable considering two thousand and eleven is the last time that we, we increased fares. What else I should note here, when you're looking at these, these prices, you'll see the pricing in black, and then the one right behind it in blue, the blue is a discounted fare. So we give discounted fares to seniors, individuals with disabilities, Medicare recipients, and students who are age six to nineteen. So if you're in any of those categories, then you're going to pay half the price, which is the blue. You can see here that there's express route, regional, airport, airport and bus. So the local's going to carry you on anything, whether it's, it's train, or it's a bus. Express will be more, and you do have some express routes within this area. Regional's really not going to affect you very much, that's going a long distance, that's somebody going from Boulder to downtown Denver, from Conifer to downtown Denver. Wheat Ridge, you're going to really mostly run into, to local and express. One thing that we are coming out with that will hopefully make this a little bit easier also is expansion of a day pass. And you'll see here that the day pass is five dollars, twenty cents, or two dollars, sixty for a local. How we come up with those figures is that if you're getting on a bus twice a day, that's going to be what that day pass would be. That's where, where we come up with these figures. A monthly pass would be a hundred and four dollars. Reason we came up with that is because if you're boarding forty times a month, that's what gets you at a break even. So if you're using it five days a week, your monthly pass is going to be your best bet, because once you've gotten on forty times, so that would be twenty days, twenty working days, you're going to come out ahead. One of the things that we'd like to add in here is that with airport right now, we have varying fees, it's either nine, eleven, or thirteen, depending on how far you're going. What this will do is just take it to a straight ten dollars. So let's say once the gold line opens, if you were going from the far west end of it, you're going to be getting on, going to the airport, even though you would have two boardings, you're paying for an airport fee, so it would cost you ten dollars to get out to the airport. We think that's a pretty good price considering what parking is, even if, you know, you have somebody drop you off just for the amount of distance it takes. It seems that we have not heard a lot of argument on that pricing, and it is simplified because it's just one straight fare, no matter how far you're going. Again, the whole reason we're going here with this is because it simplifies it, but getting rid of the transfers is going to be hard for some people to swallow. I can tell you, having talked to the bus drivers and the train drivers, that they will be thrilled once the transfers are gone. Transfers take up a lot of time, there's actually quite a bit of fraud with transfers, believe it or not, people actually sell them. Which, and, and the amount of arguments that people get into, because when you use a transfer, you have to use it within a three-hour window. So if somebody's just a few minutes late, they're willing to really argue up a storm. So the drivers are just thrilled that the proposal includes that. But again, we're going out to the public. I'm a public servant, it's like you're a public servant, the people, the drivers for RTD are, work for a public agency, so what we're going out right here with right now is to get some feedback. So I'm hoping to kind of give you all a heads up, and if you have your town hall meetings, maybe you would be willing to share with your attendees that if they are a transit user, they might want to speak up and get their, their comments in before we start to make some, some hard decisions. I'm going to go on just a little bit here to our revenue. The common question I get is that, do any of our routes pay for themselves? And the answer is no, none of them do. Level of subsidy on some routes could just consider acceptable, in others, I personally find it to be a horrible amount of subsidy. Our revenue in two thousand and fifteen, we estimate is going to be five hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. The cost to operate the system, again, was five thirty-seven million in revenue, it costs us nine hundred and thirty-seven to operate it. Substantial amount of subsidy there. I put together a list of the routes within Lakewood and Golden, I came from City Hall, Lakewood City Hall, we're coming here, and I put together some of the routes that are in your area, just so you can kind of get an idea of what, different routes, how they compare to one another. Actually, the, the, it's probably some of the more common routes, thirty-eight, the subsidy is four thirty-two each time somebody steps on that, that, that bus. And just so we're all clear on what subsidy is, if somebody paid two dollars, twenty-five cents to get on, it still is an additional four dollars, thirty-two cents subsidy on top of that fare that they've paid. Wheat Ridge actually has, there's, there's not too many routes that get me pretty upset because I do get very upset with some of the subsidies. An example would be, I actually live in Lakewood, and the column ride, which you don't have in Wheat Ridge, column ride is something that came in to fill routes that were eliminated or reduced when the West Corridor was opened. The Belmar column ride is one of those that came in to replace two routes. The Belmar column ride, which is these little green buses, maybe you've seen these in different areas, and it's more of a door-to-door service. We have column rides, there's probably twenty, twenty column rides throughout the RTD district. The Belmar column ride is absolutely horrible, it's, for each time somebody steps on it, the subsidy is thirty-eight dollars. That's terrible. So if you take a round trip, there are people who own limousine service and they would be happy to take over a route like this because the subsidy is so bad. So we are going to be making some changes. What's unfortunate is that routes, local bus routes that had far lower subsidy, this was before I was on the board, those routes were eliminated in expectation that the West Line was going to have more ridership than it currently does, and the column ride was supposed to fill in, so we're kind of at a tough choice in doing evaluations. Do we bring those local bus services back or not? I think this is something you're going to also experience when the Gold Line opens, and we do have a lot of lessons that were learned from the West Line. You can see here, the West Line itself subsidy is about eight dollars per boarding. You can see here, the West Line itself subsidy is about $8 per boarding. This does include capital, so we need to factor that in. Certainly, rail service is a lot more capital expense than a bus. But the reason I wanted to bring all of this up is because people, comments that we'll get are, it's too expensive to travel on the bus, it's too expensive to travel on the train. At the end of the day, I have to look at my constituents, just like all of you do in your own seats, the majority of my constituents are not public transit users, just like most areas. There's only about 5% of the population that uses public transit. I can't say no to these fare increases, because then I'm saying to all of these other people, we're just gonna have to keep taking, more of your sales tax dollar's gonna go to subsidies for this. So where we've come up with these figures, the fare revenue proposal that we've got, you're all familiar with their strategic budget plans. These rates are what it takes to get us to slightly more than break even. If we were to reduce them, the first obvious choice, if we reduce our fare revenue, would be to have cuts in areas that are the low-hanging fruit. The further out you get out into the suburbs, that's the lower hanging fruit, it's the areas where the service just costs more. We did a survey in 2011, and at that time, the riders were surveyed, and they said themselves they would rather see a fare increase than have their service cut. So we're again going back out to the public. If the public generally feels the fares are too high, and they would rather see some fare cuts, I'm open to hearing what everybody has to say, both from yourselves and anybody who may be watching this, and hopefully they are getting good service so they can hear all of these just fascinating things. Another item that we've encountered a lot is we're getting a lot of negative comments from people who are income challenged, or agencies, or groups representing them. And so it should be known that RTD, we work with about 200 nonprofits, and a substantial amount of fares are given out to people who truly are in a situation where they can't afford a bus pass or bus ticket. And just in 2014, there was about $5.8 million in fares, that these agencies will come to us, RTD, we sell them passes at a discounted rate. Then they have the option to either, their client can either maybe perhaps pay for 50% of that fare, or in some cases, the client is being given a bus pass for free. RTD ourselves subsidized about $2.5 million of that $5.8. So there is a lot of money going towards assisting those who are in a spot that, you know, they're trying to find a job, they're in a tough situation, and there's just only so much that we can do with keeping fares low. Again, that's why I wanted to show you the subsidy. Nothing's free. So right now, we are starting the public hearings. And I gave you all a brochure that you can walk away with this information, and on the first page there, you're gonna see the public hearings. So for this area, we're having one in each of the directors' districts, so there's 15 directors on the RTD board. The one that would be closest for Wheat Ridge residents could be either Lakewood, that will be this Wednesday at Clements Community Center, so that's Colfax and Yarrow at 6:30 PM. The other one would be Director Lorraine Anderson, is just to the north here, and that's Arvada City Hall. So more than likely, most people would wanna go to the one this Wednesday, but if they can't, then Monday, March 30th is the one in Arvada, 6:30 PM. There's always opportunity for public comment by going to the RTD website. And if by chance, somebody does not have internet access, which is always possible, they can call our customer service line at 303-299-6000. Again, 303-299-6000, and submit their comments there. The stage that we're at right now is that we'll be, we're going out to public comment, public hearings for these daily-type passes. Excuse me, April 14th is when we'll come back with staff, all the public comments that we've gotten, and that following Tuesday, we as RTD board will vote on whether to pass these or not. Then we'll have another stage, and that is where we will be going over the ECO passes, the Flex passes. That affects actually a large population of our riders, especially the bigger the company, the more possible they're using an ECO pass. And I can say generally, most passes are probably looking at a 12% increase, but we're doing a real, finally, a real evaluation on how the ECO passes are being used. For a long time, we actually didn't really know where people were using them, because our fleet is really limited. How we measure ridership is we use automatic passenger counters. It's actually, just like you walk in a store and it dings because you've walked through, in the same way when you enter on a bus, it counts you as you're going on and off. A third, only a third of our fleet has automatic passenger counters. So now that people are using the ECO pass smart cards, and they're having to tap the card each time they use it, we're finally getting a good idea how much the ridership is, and what should they be charged. There's a lot of things that went into all of this analysis. We have certain federal laws that we have to comply with, which a great part of that has to do with civil rights equity analysis. So it wasn't that this was just, you know, a two-hour, let's put together some fair figures and go out to the public and see how it flies. That's the end of the presentation, so I'm gonna just flip back to, just so I can keep it up in case anybody, anybody can see it, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Natalie. Are there questions from our council? I guess you were pretty thorough then.
I'm pretty free. Okay. Alright, good.
Oh, we do have a question, Mr. Or a comment.
Thank you very much for the presentation, really appreciate the information.
You're welcome. I thought it was, it's gonna be pretty substantial changes for some people, so I thought it would be appropriate to come out and let you know.
We do have a question, Mr. Starker.
Thank you very much, nice presentation. If you do away with transfers, how will you, how will you sort of regulate that? And I must, you know, when you get on, I'm familiar with getting on a bus and getting a transfer to go on another line within three hours. So if I get on a bus and you don't have a transfer, how will that, how will that functionally sort of work?
Well, it just takes out one step for you, you don't have to be carrying a transfer, worrying about getting it, because you won't have any time limitations. You just, let's say you're getting on the 32 to go over to Wadsworth and use the 76. Simply means that your option is, you get on that 32, you pay your fare, you get on the 76, you pay your fare, and let's say you're coming home the same opposite direction, do the same. Now, that's not really the way you would want to do it, because then you would be paying four fares at $2.60. What you're going to wanna do is buy a day pass. And you pay your $5.20 at the beginning of the day, and you can ride as much as you want.
So, so you wouldn't get a, so instead of paying $2.60, you would, and getting a, getting a transfer, it's gonna cost you sort of twice, twice what it is now? Is that, is that an accurate way to look at it?
Well, if somebody bought their passes that way, but you wouldn't wanna do that, so we'd almost need an example of what, what are they doing that day to leave home and get back home? Are they gonna be using four buses? If they're using four buses, then you wanna buy your day pass. Because the reason we came up with the $5.20 is it's $2.60 times two. So it's-
And will you market your passes? My car, my car broke and I need to take the bus to work. This is sort of my example. And so I, you know, it didn't start this morning, so I'm gonna go down to the bus stop and get on the bus, and because unless you're selling tokens at the bus stop, and I assume you're not doing that, right?
No, we discontinued those.
Okay, so I'm gonna get on the bus and give a guy $2.60, and then when I need to transfer, I'll give the next driver $2.60. And then I suppose during the daytime, I could arrange to get a bus pass somewhere?
Well, when you get on the bus, we are, we're installing about $2, $3 million worth of vending machines on the buses. So when you get on that bus, you can just buy the day pass to start with.
Okay, so you can, you'll be vending everything on the bus?
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry if I didn't understand that. Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah. You will be able to buy your, do a single boarding, or the day pass. The other options, like a week-long pass, which is something we offer, a monthly pass, those you actually have to go to another location. We have kiosks in certain places. But for your, just a day's worth of riding, you can get on that bus and buy everything you need on the first time, and a $5.20. Now, if you wanna get really good with it, let's say you're only, you're only taking one bus to work and one home, you actually will save some money if you don't buy that $5.20, because the single, the smart card, I can't remember actually if I told you, you get the 25 cent discount with a smart card. Hopefully, I included that. If you were to do, pay with your smart card, because you got on bus A in the morning, right?
Right.
Okay, and you're gonna pay $2.35, and then you're going right to work on that bus, and then you're coming home. What you would wanna do to be most frugal is you would pay with your smart card each of those two buses, and then instead of the $5.20, you're gonna pay $4.70 for your whole day. Just depends on how many times you need to get on a bus.
And will, the vending on the bus is through the bus driver, or is there another automated system there?
It's a machine, so it's, you know, not like the old days where you're, like, he's really handing you, so it is a vending machine. And he's watching to make sure it functions right.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm assuming that you would, each person would figure out whether a single board or a day pass, or even a smart card, I believe you called it, that would be whichever works out the best for you, and yet it's been, it's simpler because of, we don't have the transfers anymore?
Yeah. And, and it does get, you know, I myself look at certain things, and I know, yeah, like, like a gym membership. Okay, should I pay the daily, or do I know I'm gonna get, get my, in gear and go to the gym that many times?
We'll all be frugal and figure it out, I'm sure.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Can you purchase both the smart cards and the day pass from the machine?
Purchase the smart card and the-
From the machine on the bus?
On the bus? I don't believe we'll have the vending machine for the smart card on the bus. We're just actually going into the RFP for that right now.
Does, that'll just be for the day pass?
Yes. I need to double-check, that's a good question, also. We, just going through that process right now.
Thank you.
Thanks. I will leave, just a couple extras, maybe they can go in the hallway or something.
That's a great idea.
Great. And again, thank you very much.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. We'll now move on to city managers' matters.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items, since we don't have a meeting until, our next meeting's April 6th. Couple of things coming up before that. Our annual Easter egg hunt is this year, Saturday, March 28th, 10:00 AM at Panorama Park. And we're also scheduling our large, annual large item pickup. It's gonna be two Saturdays, May 23rd and the 30th. Registration for that begins on March 30th. I'm sorry, May 23rd and, May, May 23rd and May 30th are the actual pickup days. Registration for that begins on March 30th. It's a first-come, first-served. I think we have 275 vouchers for that, so you can go to the city's website to register for them.
Thank you. Sure.
Patrick, on that large item pickup, you know how we talked about extending that to other parts of our city, and even looking at more of pickup that might be like paint cans and what, you know? Is there any extension to that? Because I know we talked about that in the budgeting process.
This is, this large item pickup is citywide. It's for anybody in the whole city. But it is for large, it isn't, there is a list on the website of what we pick up and what we don't. It is for a single large item. We aren't currently picking up the hazardous materials, because there is a significant cost for the city to dispose of those. We didn't, we don't have those in this budget, but if that's something we wanna do for future, I think we'll need to have a discussion about that.
Okay.
Okay. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
I have nothing tonight.
Elected officials' matters, Ms. Langworthy?
Am I gonna be first?
Sure.
So the other, the other thing that's kinda coming up, I know we have a little time, but I've had some people let me know that they've received their postcards about the proposed bicycle improvements on 32nd Avenue. And so just a reminder that April 1st, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, here at Council Chambers is a meeting about the proposed bicycle lanes on 32nd Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. DeTulio?
Just to confirm, the large item pickup is in addition to the neighborhood cleanups, and we expanded that program to include other districts. I believe we added another $20,000 into the budget, if I remember. So the large item pickup will be in addition to the cleanup in District 1, and Districts 2, 3, and 4, whatever they end up being this year. So be aware of those dates and times as well.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just three things. First, I do wanna thank the Animal Control Commission for all the work and for the many years that they've done. I know perhaps tonight seemed abrupt, but in fact, we've been discussing this item diligently for quite a while. And I wanna thank everyone who has been participating over the years for the work that they've done, and hope that we'll continue to see them as we, as we move forward. Also, wanted to congratulate Patrick for the distinction of manager of the year, so thanks for all the work you do. And finally, Councilmember Fitzgerald and I held a coffee with council at Davies Chuckwagon Diner at 26th and Kipling. Thank you to Davies Chuckwagon for helping us with a room. In fact, we had great attendance and participation. It was a full house, so thanks to everyone who came. One item that came up multiple times during that meeting was ongoing issues at Discovery Park. Several issues, ongoing damage that's been occurring at the park, as well as concerns of smoking, language, and some other things. At that meeting, we actually had a good dialogue and started to think about the idea of setting up a task force to try to look at the issues and what the solutions might be moving forward. I've subsequently talked to the mayor about that, and if she will pursue, help me pursue this, we'd like to look at a task force that would assemble citizens who are concerned about this and look for some solutions as we move forward, trying to make Discovery Park a great park that it is and should continue to be.
And of course, I'll be glad to do that. I heard some similar concerns at the coffee that I had, and talked to Patrick briefly about it. Actually, I spoke to Joyce Mann worrying about it as well, and an ad hoc committee or a specific use committee is certainly a good idea. I think we could probably figure out how we wanna pull it together, or how you all, how you all wanna do it. And Patrick, I believe you said a resolution would be needed?
Yeah, I think a resolution would be fine to establish some, kind of the mission of a task, limited task force, and what their roles and duties are, and we can, we can do that.
Well, we can go forward with that, see who wants to get it, and see how you want it formed.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
I as well would like to thank the folks on the Animal Control Commission for their work. I know I've worked with several of them several times, so I wanna thank them for their work. I also want to thank the code enforcement folks, because I do think it's not always just give a ticket and that's the end of it, because I will say, I had two German Shepherds at large, like, four years ago, and this is before I was on city council, and they treated me very fairly and respectfully, and so it isn't just about a ticket. So I, I do wanna clarify that, because I have been on the other side of that. So I do wanna say that. The other thing I wanna share, and I'd get up, but I think I hurt my back gardening too much this weekend. So, hold on. So what I would like to share is a program that the folks at Wilmore Davis did. Oh, okay, I'll get up. And what this, yeah, I don't know where the camera is. So, thanks Patrick, thanks Vanna. So actually, this is a program that the sixth graders at Wilmore Davis, there were select sixth graders, and what, first of all, I'd like to thank a retired teacher who, who lives right up the street from Wilmore Davis, Dick Carkeek. from Wilmore Davis, Dick Carkeek, cause he kind of, uh, rounds up this program. Uh, but what they do is they, um, the Denver Photographic, um, Society actually sponsors this. Uh, members of this society actually come, help the kids take photos. Um, the Walgreens on Forty-fourth, on, on Forty-fourth and Wadsworth donates all the photos. And, uh, these were some of the highlighted select photos from the students this year. So I wanted to share that, and we're also gonna put that in, uh, City Hall in the lobby for the next couple of weeks, so that folks can enjoy, uh, the view. So I just wanna thank Walgreens, thank the Denver Photographic Society, thank Dick Carkeek, thanks Wilmore Davis, you know, for all of the work and efforts that they're doing to, um, actually give the students of Wilmore Davis a new eye in the lens, or an eye through the lens. So, yeah, so that's a cool program that I wanted to share.
Great. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, on, uh, April fourth, I'll be joining the Wheat Ridge Police Department in a fundraiser for Saint Baldry's, which is an organization that helps, uh, research and support families with children who have cancer. And for myself, uh, this is a rather personal mission, because, uh, my best friend growing up, John Patterson, he's a police officer with the Thornton Police Department. Uh, his one-year-old son, Jackson Patterson, has, uh, a very rare form of cancer. And so I'm in the process of raising a thousand dollars. And the benefit of me raising a thousand dollars is that you get to see me with my head shaved, and it's not a pretty sight, but, um, so I'll, I'll be, uh, sending around some information about how you can donate to this great cause. And I do have a, uh, a picture here of Jackson. Uh, this is Jackson.
Hold up. For the cameras.
So, uh, Jackson is quite the fighter. He's already gone through several rounds of chemo and, and some significant surgeries, but he's fought tirelessly through it. His parents have gone through a significant amount of, uh, effort and time to, um, to work with Saint Baldry's. And so I'm very pleased to join them and, and join the Wheat Ridge Police Department in their efforts to raise money for this effort as well. So it's, uh, be, uh, kind of interesting. I don't think that, uh, it's been a long time, maybe since I was twelve, that I had my head shaved. So, um, just know that, uh, when I come back after I have my head shaved, that, uh, that's why I did that. So, thank you.
You're inspiring us.
Thank you.
I guess that's you, Mr.-
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd like to, to bring forward, uh, something to council. I've got a, a handout for, uh, some of our counselors, and I'll have some, uh, available after the meeting also. Um, it's been, it's been a while since our, uh, election last fall, when we, uh, when we answered a couple of questions about, uh, Thirty-eighth Avenue and, and another question in town. But I wanna bring forth a proposal that I'm calling a Wheat Ridge City Center, a new direction forward. And what, uh, what I'm hoping to do is to, is to re-engage on how we might, um, uh, talk, talk through Thirty-eighth Avenue and generate some new plans. And I, I'd like to do this in conjunction with the Wadsworth PEL study. I think that when we look at, uh, at developing a city center for our, for our city, um, if we looked at Wadsworth from about Thirty-fifth to Forty-eighth, and just west of Thirty-eighth, uh, Avenue, and then maybe down to about Pierce Street, that would sort of encompass a city, a city center. And if we focus that, then we may be able to leverage some of the, uh, planning out of the PEL study and, uh, and utilize some of the best portions of the, of the Thirty-eighth Avenue corridor plan. Um, I think in, my, my first bullet point on this is, uh, is really to develop a strategy to engage all of the stakeholders in a process that's collaborative and transparent, and seek citizen input. Because I think it's really important for us to, to move forward with, uh, with redevelopment of the Thirty-eighth Avenue, um, plan, and, uh, and have people, and a feeling that we've really gone out to the community, and that, and that, uh, we've got, we've got buy-in, we've got good discussion. Um, and so there's, uh, you know, that's really the main, the main thrust of the, um, of the program that I'm, that I'm putting forward. I think we need to, um, uh, look at the achievements that we've, um, that we've made on Thirty-eighth Avenue. Uh, you know, some of the new popular events and, and, uh, the new residential and the commercial developments that we've got, some of the branding efforts. Uh, I think we need to, to, um, to recognize last fall's election results that, uh, that indicate that the curb and gutter should remain in the location where it is. And I think we should be faithful to that. Um, I, I think that we, um, should look at creating high-quality features as we enter the city center area, so that people, people coming into our city really know that they're coming into a, a commercial district and a, and a really vibrant part of our, of our city. Um, there's some other, uh, some other details. Uh, I think that we should, um, uh, I'm, I'm proposing that we would leave three lanes of, uh, of traffic, um, in the, in the urban core area, the Uppham Street to Pierce Street, uh, with, uh, two bicycle lanes. And I think we should have parallel parking available at that, uh, at that site. And then, um, create amenity zones as we're able to, rehabilitate sidewalks, and, and try to make this downtown area from Uppham to Pierce a real destination, pedestrian bicycle-friendly, work it in with the, uh, the bicycle plan coming from Thirty-fifth Avenue and, and circulating through the downtown, uh, downtown area. Um, I believe that we should return the Thirty-eighth Avenue from Pierce Street East to the, uh, to the lane configuration that we had, uh, before we, uh, before we made those changes. I think as we do, uh, I think really the design focus should, should center maybe around the intersections of this downtown area, so that we, um, do maybe, uh, take the design that we did, um, when Mr. DiTullio was mayor, and we did the east portion, and down at, uh, Thirty-eighth and, and Harland, we had some nice landscaping there and streetscaping, and it really makes it look like a focal point, that on the, on the smaller streets, that we maybe turn some of that down the street, so that, so that we, uh, try to engage the, the local communities in what's happening up on the, on the street side. Um, I think we should bolster the, the bicycle program that we have, and continue to build that out. I think we should, uh, try to provide greater sidewalk safety, particularly at the street crossings in downtown, where the Wheat Ridge Five-Eight and the new school configurations that we're working on. I think we should work with Jefferson County Schools to try to develop the, um, the land south of the school into a civic space. Um, I, I think that we should work with the existing property owners in the city to, to, to help them come up with ideas that, uh, that are able to redevelop their properties, or work with developers to redevelop their properties. Um, we should work on a timeline, uh, that, uh, that coincides with the PEL study, and maybe try to leverage some of the financing that may be available, or the design ideas, or some of the, the synergies that we might get from the, uh, from the PEL study on Wadsworth. Um, we should explore financing options as we're able to, uh, and look at timelines and cost profiles that, uh, sort of recognize the need to minimize impacts to local business, and make this an affordable project that our city can get behind. So this is really an effort to sort of put this, put this back on, on the table. Uh, I think we've had a, had a chance to sit back and, and, um, consider some of our options over the winter. I think it's time to, to re-engage our citizens in a new debate and to move this forward. And I ask council to, um, to consider this proposal, and maybe, uh, lay it out at a new, uh, study session, and be prepared to sort of direct staff in some, uh, ways forward.
Well, that's quite a bit.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Mr. DiTullio?
Well, to respond, um, the process you just explained was when I was on city council, even though some people have kind of forgotten that, you know, there've been previous councils and doing work, and elected officials, that's been mentioned in a few, uh, periodicals recently. That was all done from Sheridan to Harland. That basically, what, what you're recommending is perfect, because staff should be able to go back and look at the documents that were used to, um, acquire property and work with the business owners in the community to do what you're just suggesting. Because the, the deal was Harland West, we knew was gonna be a little bit more difficult, because the buildings weren't quite as straight as they was Harland East. But, um, that's the process we followed back in two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand and one, and it worked really well. So, I'm glad that, um, what's old is new again.
I, pardon me, I would, I would propose that if we have a consensus among us, that we, uh, that we bring this, uh, get staff working on this, and get this to a study session, and figure out how we can move forward.
Would that be the general desire of the council?
Well, I'm just, technically, it's not necessarily consensus here, that this is in the study session.
It would go to a study session?
No, no, I'm talking about this action we're speaking right now.
Right.
Well, and I would, I would make a, I would make a motion that we, um, that we move forward along the lines of the Wheat Ridge, uh, City Center Direction Forward memorandum.
I would move forward discussing it.
To bring it to a study session, say your motion.
To bring it to a study session.
I'll second that, and I have, I wanna make a comment too.
All right, so we have, uh, Mr. Stark, as you know, and Mr. DiTullio, as seconded, that we bring this into, this discussion, to a study session, uh, further discussion.
So, what, what this really needs to bring, when it bring, kind of, it comes forth, it has to be looking at, um, the, the new curb gutter and sidewalk, where it's currently at, to, to re-improve the sidewalk, Harland West, landscaping, um, amenity zones, like you mentioned. But, you know, looking at right-of-way acquisition from some of the business owners or easements, so that we can improve the sidewalks and the, and the amenity zones and areas where we can. And I also wanted it to include, if we could, um, discussions with the property owners, that we would look at helping them landscape their properties, where we would actually maybe acquire trees and, and vegetation, that we would install it on their property, to maintain it for a year or two, and then they would take it over. But, there are areas where it's not public right-of-way, it's private right-of-way, but we would help them with their landscaping, if we could. So I wanted, I, I think everything should be on the table, to look at the ADA sidewalks, better sidewalks, the landscaping, the streetscape, um, laneage, whatever we need to look at, so it's a comprehensive plan that goes forward, talking to all of these different business owners. Cause some of them are gonna lose parking, some of them will gain parking, some of them could, um, we could trade parking for amenities and landscaping, depending on their business.
Yes, I, you know, all of our, uh, the, the street along this five or six-block area is unique. I mean, every, every block is, every block is unique. The curb cuts, the curb gutter and sidewalk is different. Uh, I think we need to look at it on a block-by-block area, you know, the properties along the street, understand how we can make an aesthetic interface between the, you're right, the public, the public right-of-way and the, and the private development, the private property owners that are, that are behind there, work together collaboratively to try to, to make an attractive downtown or, or city center, you know, uh, area. And I think, uh, you know, I think we should try to work with the property owners on, on how they can, uh, how we can incentivize them and give, to create ideas for them to be able to develop their properties in a, in an economic and, and responsible way that, that benefits everybody.
So, I just wanna be clear, what you're recommending is that from Sheridan, you, conceptually, from Sheridan to Pierce, up on whatever, that would go back to the original, just four lanes. And then from though that, that business area would be the, still the three lanes, striping the way it is now with improvements.
That's, that's what I'm-
And we're gonna go back to the parallel parking, anyway, that should be coming up here pretty soon, anyway, so, okay. But not, not a, not a four lanes with one center lane, you're talking about just the four lanes. Four, two east, two west.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I, I, I can't, I can't recall exactly how the lane, the lane-
It was four lane, yeah. From Pierce West, it was the five lanes. It gave you more, so you had mid-center turn lane and two and two. So, I agree with that, that at least four lanes from Sheridan to whatever that bends in, where it goes in.
I would just caution the, some of this information here, uh, extends to discussion regarding the PEL study and, uh, Wadsworth from Thirty-fifth to Forty-eighth Avenue. Significant amount of effort has gone into that process as it is. I'm not expecting any sort of major changes to what has been proposed.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't either. The only thing that I'm looking at is that when you come, when you're coming sou, north on Wadsworth, and you get to Thirty-fifth, and you're, you're sort of entering our commercial district, there's, we should think about ways that we can make that understood, you know, to be part of our city. You know, rather than just, rather than just, uh, people driving through, have them know that, well, they're in, they're in Wheat Ridge now.
Sure, and I, I guess I would ask that the city staff, uh, borrow some of the processes that were undertaken in the PEL study with the block-by-block meetings, uh, that occurred within the, the PEL study. I was a participant in one of those meetings with the, uh, folks surrounding the Forty-eighth Avenue end of the corridor, and I felt like it was a good chance for those business owners and those property owners affected by that to have some say. And then also, it seemed as though it gave a chance for city staff to understand better the needs of, with respect to curb cuts. And in some cases, uh, members of the public, uh, didn't want as many curb cuts as there was currently, and that was somewhat of a, a surprise to staff. So that was kind of good, that the, that they had that opportunity to interact. And I think something like that would be beneficial along Thirty-eighth, as business owners are impacted, that they get a chance to kind of look through those and see how it can be done.
Mr. Stark, you're implying the Wheat Ridge City Center, which is that more directed toward the five-block area, including the, the Wadsworth vision of that, or was it some of the-
You know, that was really just an effort to kind of come up with a name that, that sort of, uh, looked, you know, what I, what I wanna do is to creatively engage our, our citizens, and, uh, that we have a, we have a great opportunity. And, and we've done a lot of work, and, uh, we have a great opportunity to continue to build, to, to enhance this city. So whether it's, whether it's the larger area and includes Wadsworth, whether it's, whether it's just along Thirty-eighth Avenue, I think as we, as we go and discuss, these will, these things will become evident to us.
Joyce? So, I, I just have one comment, because I do think the PEL study in the Thirty-eighth Avenue, that intersection is definitely something we have to look at. Um, coming from someone who drives Thirty-eighth Avenue every day, I don't have a problem with Thirty-eighth till I get to Wadsworth. And sometimes that's three and four lights, because Thirty-eighth is backed up so bad, that you're sitting on Thirty-eighth, because people get locked in, you know, gridlock, and so you can't go. So I do think that it is important to pull the PEL study in with this, because, um, it's our, it's a problem now, so.
I believe we have an old furlough, please, cast your vote.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I just had a couple more things.
Yes?
I, I also would like to thank the Animal, Animal Control and Welfare Commission. I, I moved into Wheat Ridge of forty years ago, this January first, and I had, um, I had a goat and a goose and a gander, and we had, uh, we had goslings, and I had a dozen chickens. And, uh, I've been a supporter for a long time of Wheat Ridge as an, as an agricultural community. And I know the, the Animal Control and Welfare Commission, uh, helped me out when we were, you know, when we were having a little farmlet over in East, uh, East Wheat Ridge. So I appreciate their work, and I hope that the citizens that are on that will continue to stay engaged in our, in our city, because we certainly need your talents. And, um, kudos to Mr. Goth, thank you.
Very much kudos to Mr. Goth, and, yes, very hard to, um, to, to go, uh, such a, to go, my mic's-
Gosh, I could've said anything. Thank you, Mr. Goth, for, uh, being, uh, our superb manager. We, we have really enjoyed working with you, I can say that quite honestly. Um, one reminder, I will be having another coffee on a Saturday. That will be April the third at nine AM at Care Bear. Coffee and goodies, nine AM, Care Bear, Care Bear, April third. And I believe that's it for tonight. Meeting is adjourned.